How much is this kind of grid?
Harlem.
And how much volume going to the...
The carefully...
Oh, yeah.
Well, Tony would like to be as good as you today.
Yeah.
Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We're here on Tuesday, August the 4th, 2015, at 6:03 at City Hall at 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. The Granbury City Council regular meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon Randy Adams with Granbury Baptist Church to lead us in our invocation, followed by our pledge allegiance in Texas pledge led by Councilman Gary Couch. Please rise.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come before you. And Father, we ask your providence, Father, your guiding hand, your divine intervention, Father, on these proceedings. And Father, as we continue to pray, we pray for your peace, for the peace that passes all understanding will be our hearts and minds in Christ Jesus. Father, as the decisions are made, and as we seek you, and as we seek your guidance, Father, we get prosperity. You said that if we trust in you with all our heart and lean unto our own understanding in all the ways we acknowledge you, you will make our paths straight and prosperous. And so, Father, I ask that in this time, the decisions are made, but you will guide these decisions with your mighty hand. We ask all these things from your son's most precious and holy name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas flag.
On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
At this time, the council will now conduct their citizen's participation. A little background on the citizen's participation. The city council provides an opportunity for citizens to present concerns or address issues that are not matters of consideration that are listed on the posted meeting agenda during the citizen's participation. Period at one city council meeting per month, subject to the following rules. A person wishing to address the city council must first register with the city secretary and provide the following information: their name, resident address, daytime telephone number, and the subject matter to be presented. Only one person may approach the microphone at any one time, and only that person at the microphone, upon recognition by the presiding officer, will be allowed to speak for no more than three minutes unless otherwise directed by the presiding officer. The speakers must address their comments to the presiding officer rather than individual city council members or staff, and the speakers may file copies of their remarks or supporting information with the city secretary, who will make the information available to the city council and city manager if requested. The council will be allowed to receive input or information for a future agenda item, but will not be allowed to enter into any discussions. The council shall allow a maximum of 30 minutes for the citizen's participation during the designated council meeting. We have a lot of speakers tonight, so I think, I hope we can make it into 30 minutes. Our first speaker tonight is Hayes, and I'm going to butcher this last name, Stripling.
Stripling.
Yep, okay.
Good evening. I'm Hayes Stripling. I reside at 211 South Houston Street here in Granbury, and I want to express my support for the formation of a destination marketing organization for the city of Granbury. My support really boils down to one main thought that I have that's important, and it's how do we get the most successful tourism industry in Granbury, given the attractions, the budget, and the resources we have in place? And from there, I go to the thought of just what is a classic business management model. And to me, there's two in this instance. There's the city manager, city council, which it is now, or more of a classic for-profit or private business with a board of directors and a staff that reports to the board of directors. In this case, to me, it seems to make a whole lot more sense to operate the tourism industry in Granbury with a board of directors and a staff that reports to the board of directors outside of the city council, city manager. The reason I think that is because the board of directors for the DMO will be made up of the stakeholders who truly have the tourism industry as their livelihood here in Granbury. I think it will give the organization more ability to act quickly, be more accountable for the money that they spend, and I think the board of directors will be able to manage the staff and make those decisions. It boils down to me to, we will get the best bang for the buck for our tourism dollar, and I think that more of a private organization will get that done. And in closing, I want to say that it is always important not to confuse effort of an organization with results of that organization. I wanted to question whether the results have been the best that they could have been. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker will be Norman Albertson.
My name is Norm Albertson. I live at 628 South Harbor Court here in Granbury. I want to bring up the same issue, but I want to call for a referendum. We have really two different issues between the DMO and our own tourism board. And really, in reading the newspaper, we have some problems between the facts on both sides. The new DMO wants more money from the city. I don't like paying more taxes, and I don't know anybody who likes paying more taxes. Plus, we have enough budget problems already. Why add more to it? Plus, having an independent board, I really think they ought to be under you. Not having an independent board, or having an independent board is, you lose control. And I noticed that the Chamber of Commerce were behind the DMO, and I wondered, why didn't they put up the $100,000 that they won from the city council? And I think you all have kind of a problem in that one of the members of city council wants to be in charge of the new organization. I think that really makes it very difficult for you to vote. Therefore, I am calling for a referendum of the people of Granbury. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Robert Cook.
Hi, I'm Robert Cook. I'm a homeowner of Hood County and a resident here for 10 years. I retired after 40 years as a professional architectural illustrator, and for those years, I worked as a consultant to corporations, cities, states, and the federal government, completing over 15,000 individual projects. I now work as a fine artist and a board member of the Lake Granbury Art Association. I'm interested in the city to replace its current convention and visitors bureau with an independent professional destination marketing organization, or DMO. Last year, I was fortunate enough to have a, spend the morning with Bill Geist, a real DMO pro, when he visited Granbury to take a look at our unique town. Besides the obvious amenities, Bill stated that the heart and soul of Granbury lies in its arts and cultural community. Many cities that want to develop their arts community have an arts budget, either as a separate item or part of the tourism and cultural funding. The present CVB and the city has not allocated any money for art and cultural projects. All the organized cultural groups in Granbury have had to depend on private donations from art patrons, businesses, and citizens to provide funding for our public shows and exhibitions. The current CVB has not communicated with any of the arts organizations about our needs for the last two years. The arts group would like to see an independent DMO recommend the creation of a cultural arts commission dedicated to improving arts education, creating a signature arts festival, and a public arts program. Annually, the city has handed over $700,000 to the CVB to promote tourism in Granbury. The result of that expenditure has only maintained the status quo. I would like to see a more dynamic program for that kind of money. I suggest the money will be better spent with an independent professional DMO, with their job only is to put your town on the map. When I mention destinations like Santa Fe, Sedona, Taos, Fredericksburg, and even small towns like, towns like Rockport, I want to see Granbury on that list. I believe a DMO with an experienced CEO will do that job for us. I learned a long time ago that if you want to get a job done right, effectively and completely, you hire a pro with a background and the experience to do it. Thank you very much.
Next speaker will be J.C. Campbell.
My name is J.C. Campbell and I live at 2222 Acton Highway. It's outside of the city limits, but as I've said before, spent 32 years in the city of Granbury, a lot of it on this sitting where you're sitting up there, and it means a lot to me, and I just hate to see the city make a mistake. When I was on the council, we were broke. We didn't have any money like you guys do now. It would be a pleasure to sit up there to have some funds where you can do things with. I think you need to be very frugal with this money. When I was elected onto the council, I took it from the citizens that voted for me, that they wanted me to make the decisions. They didn't want me to get a group of people to make the citizens, to make decisions for the city. That's the reason they elected you up there, was to make decisions for them, and I think that it needs to be done that way. There's a lot of, there's a lot of things to be said for that, but this is, this is another function of the city of Granbury. 16 months ago, I think it was, that we got a new, we have a new CVB director. What can you do in 16 months without the support, you know? You need to give someone some time to see what it can develop. From the, at the budget hearings, it was indicated by more than one person that the increase in attendance here in the city of Granbury, by how much money is this coming in? So I think you need to give Steve a chance to do this, because, you know, if it doesn't work, then you go back to the other place, but I think that you people hired him, so you need to give him a chance to do his job, and I just hope that you will make the decisions yourself. Thank you.
Next speaker is Dan Eichler.
I'm Dan Eichler with the, I'm the owner, operator representative with the Hilton Garden Inn. The question that seems to be up to debate is the impact that the CVB's website has had on hot revenues, or hot tax revenues. Per the article in this past Saturday's in the Hood County News, according to the city finance department, hot revenue collections are up by 10% since the start of the fiscal year last year in October. Mr. Dietrich states that it is due to the updated website, which went live in March this year. While the website looks very good, please consider the following events that happened that would have had an impact on the hot revenue. Fall outage. We had over 80 room nights per night for the entire month of October at the Hilton Garden Inn. 2013, the fall of 2013 did not have a fall outage. The sinkhole, a lot of, a lot of PR that you're able to get through the, through the sinkhole. Kroger grand opening, we had over 140 room nights at the Hilton Garden Inn. The Wolf Hollow project, over $24,000 in revenue. You also had a full lake. You almost had 15 inches of rain in May. Okay, website statistics, okay? Our numbers are different. Our numbers tell a different story than the one that Mr. Dietrich's is telling. I would be happy to show each of you, mayor and council members, how to pull the reports. In fact, we reached out to Hilton Hotels and Resorts to confirm the accuracy of our results. In conclusion, our results, along with those of the Inn on Lake Granbury, tell the same story, but different than Mr. Dietrich's. What is the elephant in the room? Mr. Dietrich's is focusing on and depending upon this website to bring business to the city and fill up rooms and fill up the GRCC. As a corporate director of sales and marketing, who has been in the hospitality industry for over 18 years, I strongly disagree with relying solely on the website to bring in all business. We manage 10 hotels, and all of them, we have a proactive salesperson that is out attending trade shows, prospecting new business, and building relationships with clients. Websites don't do this. Websites have a role, but should not replace the sales team that is focused on bringing in group business. This past March, we all spent a lot of time on putting together a great booking policy to help facilitate bringing in group business to the GRCC and to the city. From the Hilton standpoint, it has been a success. For 2015, over 15, over $89,000 in room revenue that we've booked in the year for the year. For 2016, $87,000 in revenue that we have booked for next year. That's 15, we've seen 15 different groups, a total of 15 different groups. Of the 15 groups that we, that have been secured for this year and next year, I would say less than three leads were generated from the CVB, whether it was from a trade show or from the website. We are stepping over dollars to pick up pennies. In fact, one group that my sales team booked, 50 rooms, 50 room nights at a 109 rate, accounted for more revenue than what we have seen booked from the CVB website in the entire year of 2015.
Find a time to end it.
I've got one more sentence, please.
Real quick.
You have already started the process with changing the booking policy in Matrix earlier this year. I ask for your support in finishing the process and establishing an independent DMO. Thank you very much for your time.
Our next speaker will be Phil Gochel. Thank you, Phil. Well, obviously, you didn't.
I'm Phil Gochel at, from 404 Torrey Street. I have two things that I want to express today. The first is gratitude. Gratitude to the city for the wonderful Granbury Opera House that we have, and the way that you have supported Granbury Theater Company, of which I'm a part, in our operation. You are wonderful, and we appreciate the work that you've done, and the work that's done by other already established organizations like the Opera Guild, who continue to help us in our endeavor to create art, to attract new audiences, to fulfill what we feel like is our mission. So I want to tell you, there's a little, I'm a college professor, so I've got a metaphor that I want to present to you. We now have a very successful production in The Drowsy Chaperone. I ventured out to invite critics from the Fort Worth, Dallas area to come review our show, and we're a hit. So that says to Dallas-Fort Worth people, drive to Granbury, it's worth being here. Come to the square, come buy a ticket, enjoy your time in Granbury, and if it's your first time, come back. So that, and the way that we've done this is through a basic precept of, and I guess it could be a business model, of theater is the three Cs. In theater, we have all of these different factions that come together. Everybody is not equally talented in every area. Some people are great actors, some people are great scenic designers, somebody else is a lighting designer, somebody else is a stage manager, someone else is a costume designer. There's another one, another discipline is sound design. The reason it's developed into that is everybody has their own area of expertise, so here's what ties it together. Communication has to be so immediate and flexible within the organization that we can adapt to each other and accommodate the work of each of those disciplines that come together to create success. So communication is there. Collaboration. You know, I may have an idea that doesn't work with the color scheme the costumer has, and she has to use that, so we all are collaborating all the time with that. So the other one is the obvious one, cooperation. I see the city of Granbury and the idea of attracting people as requiring an independent group of people as a DMO in order to quickly respond to what's going on in town. We're very dependent on packages, and I think if you've been around and you've heard me or visited with me at all, you know that we are now very much back in the community business, that we're not over-isolated just doing our thing. We want to make the opera house available and are to different groups coming in, so that also says we want to cooperate and provide concession to restaurants, all of the hospitality industry. I know, I'm done. And so that's what I see. It's got to be a dynamic group that can respond and create more business for us. We're also entrepreneurial as well as artistic. Thanks.
Our next speaker will be Rock Pastillo.
Good evening, council members, citizens. My name is Rock Pastillo. My wife and Tammy and I reside here in Granbury, and we are the owners of Spellbound on the Square. We're store owners. What I'd like to speak to you about tonight is, now is our time in support of the DMO. Council, each and every one of you, had decided at some point that now is your time to move forward to make a difference in Granbury, and you made the decision, and you are having the effect. Now is our time for all the rest of Granbury. Residential, commercial, and industrial construction is on the upswing. Now is our time. The school system has been converted into a mini-university. Now is our time. People are relocating to Granbury. They come into the store and tell us constantly, they're moving into the community, whether for the schools or for what, business, for work, whatever it is, a variety of things, they're moving here. Now is our time. Football teams, like the Cowboys and college teams and everything, talk to their players and let them know when everything is looking, and it's on the upswing, it's optimistic, now is our time. There's a resurgence on the square with shops, with storekeepers, with restaurants and everything. Now is our time. HOT revenues, they've been stagnant for years, we're below the state average. I think they're starting to move in the right direction now. It can be much better. Now is our time. It's Granbury's time, and it's now is our destiny to move into this direction here. The lake is up, things are going well, you could be the council that assesses the future for the direction of Granbury for the next several years. Now is our time. Thank you.
Next speaker will be Jim Leach.
Good evening. My name is Jim Leach. My wife and I own the Inn on Lake Granbury at 205 and 221 West Doyle Street. I appreciate the time to speak today. Thank you, Mayor, Mr. Kaufman, our city manager, and everyone on the city council. My wife and I have lived in Granbury for 13 years and love our town and its people. We also came here to build an inn business. Over the past 10 years, we've seen CVB directors come and go, some willingly and some not, and we have watched our tourism efforts ebb and flow with the changes. While some progress has been made at various times over the past three years, the inherent problems remain with the city-run CVB. As the Geis report stated, there is very little confidence among many in the tourism community that the current CVB structure, under a city municipality, has the capacity to reach our full potential, and that is to bring many more visitors to shop, eat, play, and stay. Currently, the CVB runs without being adequately staffed. The highest cost marketing activities in the past year could not be measured as their, to their true effectiveness, and a proposal is on the table for the council review to cut the tourism fund budget. The question I have is why? If the CVB department is claiming to be making progress, why are we making cuts? Why wouldn't a tourism entity spend enough money to push further growth forward for its most important industry, the one that brings bed tax and sales tax to the city? Based on our DMO committee research, none of our main tourism competitors are doing this, so it is puzzling to me and many of us. As you know, I'm recommending with the support of the hotels and B&amp;Bs that we transition to an independent DMO. That's what I stated when I was making my presentation at the budget workshop. Based on my in-experiences in attracting thousands of visitors to Granbury over the past 10 years, I am confident that a carefully appointed board of directors made up of very capable members, and a highly competent CEO with strong management, operations, and tourism experience will deliver on the promise we all have for Granbury. It's not okay to continue to do what we're doing with little support from primary tourism stakeholders. After all, they're the ones that have put their livelihoods on the line. Increased visitor traffic from a new CVB website is good on paper, but bookings from referrals put heads in beds and drive additional spending and sales tax revenue. Our tourism efforts will thrive in an independent nonprofit, it will work hand-in-hand with the community, build homegrown and external partnerships to expand tourism opportunities, and focus its resources with speed and precision. My business is successful because we never stop asking ourselves, how can we be better? I am hopeful that the city council will agree to put in place a freestanding tourism organization measured by real dollars and cents results. Some may ask, how will we know if the DMO will be responsible stewards of taxpayer money? A Visit Granbury DMO would act, won't act without a contract with the city to use and manage taxpayer money in the eight ways the state law mandates, I think there's eight ways, no matter what anyone says. A responsible DMO will obligate itself to deliver on its contract with the city, and the expectation will be the same from the city. This will be in writing and negotiated with the explicit intent to be partners in this endeavor. Again, I'm very excited for our future and hope all of us will come together, together to grow our tourism industry. Thank you for your time.
And our next speaker and final speaker will be Ken Hackett.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, council and mayor and city manager for the opportunity to speak. My name's Ken Hackett. I'm a member and owner of Granbury Square Plaza, and I too rise to support the establishment of a DMO, but I do it from a little different perspective. I ask that we take a stock of the talent that's within our city, and the people that I've seen come forward to work hard in making the presentation of the DMO. I do this more importantly as a federal citizen that values citizen input and collaboration, and that's the first and foremost reason I support it. Whenever you can involve your citizenry who are talented, who have the motivation to do the very best for its own business, it may be a tad selfish, but it works. I also do this, council, because when we come together as citizens, is when we share our ideas, is when we, and we value the opinions of others, and the people who have made that investment into the city of Granbury, the best will come about. We become a better community when we involve our citizens. I say that not only for, for the benefit of the public-private partnership, which I always value when I look at these things, but most importantly, when we do so, we bring our community closer, closer as neighbors and closer as friends. community closer, closer as neighbors and closer as friends. So let's explore the possibilities and the promises of tomorrow of a DMO. I'm pretty sure that the grand experiment will be well worth the time.
Thank you all for your participation. At this time, the grant, the council will go into the consent agenda. That item being considered approving council meeting, many meeting minutes of July 15th through 16th, 2015, annual budget workshop, and the July 21st, 2015, regular meeting. Council, one note there is, is entered into your packet that there was a change to the July 21st, 2015 executive session as listed on the minutes. It should have read pending or compensating litigations, not the airport litigations. So council, you've had an opportunity to look at those minutes. Are there any changes or amendments to these? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Couch. Any more discussion, council? Councilman Parsons, how do you vote? Councilman Allen, how do you vote? Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Perkel?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. We will now move into the deliberation agenda. The first item being to consider setting a public hearing for the date, time, and the place to receive public comment on the Granbury, on the city of Granbury fiscal year 2015-16 proposed budget. Council, on, on this item here, you did see that there has been some, uh, budget reconsiderations after the budget workshop. You got a, a updated list here. I'll just kind of go over those a little bit there. The general fund budget balance of, of seven 1615 workshop, the final ab, abhorrent value appraised value adjustment was 132,369. And then we, down below, we added funding for the economic development of 45,000, the funding for the legal lake level, legal lake level 25,000, and we added contingency for the DMO funding of 100,000, reduced proposed merit salary raise from 3% to 1.5% for a total of 98.326. And also, we added a police vehicle of 31,000, the resurfacing of the kids pool for 8,750, the Christmas decorations for 5,000, miscellaneous adjustment, which is insurance, workman's comp such as that, 15,972. And then we also, on this one here, you have the airport transfer fund of 41,000 and also the contingency of 41,000, so it's a wash there. And down below on the utility part of it, we do, do the, did do the reduction in the reserve utilities for 183,966. And then the capital expenditures for wastewater filtering engineer, we were able to pull out 156,060 and reduce the proposed merit salary raise from 3% to, to 1.5% at 27,906. The total changes after the budget workshop was 183,966. So you had that in your packet? So at this time, at this time, council, we're going to merely set the date to, to work to, to have the public hearings on these, on these items. I will, I will note on these, these changes and stuff, there are some changes on there that are, that the council needs to take a really good look at, and that being the, the, the proposed merit decrease from 3% to 1.5%. I think there are several areas there where we could probably work on that, where we could continue to give the 3% raise to the employees. So I would encourage to look at that, but at this time, we are going to set the dates. The proposed, the proposed dates by the staff is for September the 1st, 2015, at 6:00 P.M. at City Hall. And that's the time limit that we have to, to set the date to, to set the budget.
Mayor, you commented on that. Can I make a comment on that?
On what item, Mr. Allen?
You was talking about the wages and stuff. Can I make?
Well, I merely pointed that out to the council on the changes here. It's, you know, you'll have time to look those over and go through them and...
There's several on here we need to look at.
Yeah, and that's what, what, what our city manager done, and if he would want to enlighten you on this, he's, he's put together the things that would keep us at the current tax rate. And as you see, the effective tax rate is a lot, is somewhat lower than the current tax rate. So what we're trying to do is mend this where we can fall within the, the current tax rate and, and not to increase the taxes.
Should be no problem.
So at this, at that, I will entertain a motion to set the, the date for September 1st, 2015, at 6:00 P.M. at City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas.
Move.
I have a motion by Councilman Parsons.
Second.
I have a second by Councilperson Myers. Any more discussion, council? Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Parsons?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Perkel?
Aye.
Councilman Myers?
Aye.
That, that date has been set. Our next item is to discuss the proposed 2015-2016 fiscal year property abhorrent tax rate from the city of Granbury and vote to place a proposal to adopt the rate of .397584, which is the current rate, on the agenda for the future city council meeting as an action item. And here again, council, we need to set up two public hearings, and here again, we'll need to have the dates and the, the times and the place. And the recommendations for this is the first public hearing being the city council meeting on August 18th, 2015, at 6:00 P.M. here in City Hall, and the second one being a public hearing, special city council meeting on August the 24th, 2015, at 6:00 P.M. here at City Hall. So council, do I have a motion for those recommended dates?
May I ask for a little clarification, mayor?
Mr. Par-
There's in the, in the minutes, or in the packet, in the dialogue, it talks about August the 24th, which is a Monday. Then on the calendar and in the special meetings workshop, it talks about it being on August the 25th.
Right.
Uh, Monday, the 24th is what we're asking for?
We're asking 24th, and I will clarify that. Matter of fact, I called to talk, to verify that today. The 25th was the original, but at that time, there is a meeting here in the city hall, so that's when we moved it to the 24th. So the down below, as you see, is what we had as the original proposal, and we probably shouldn't even have put that in there because that one there went away when the, the, the place wasn't available. So yes, what we're proposing is the 24th, which is a Monday.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Mayor, when are we supposed to have a meeting with the P and Z?
It'd be on the 12th. And that'd be a dual meeting, that's why you don't see many, many community development items on today's agenda. Any more discussion, council? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Parsons. Any more discussion, council? Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Parsons?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Perkel?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
Those dates will be set and approved for August the 18th and August the 24th at 6:00 P.M. here at City Hall. At this time, I'm now, I would now declare that the city council is convened into open session, that all members are present. The city council will now go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with authority contained in the following section. Section 551.071, consultation with the attorney on airport commendation, condemnation, condemnations, and section 551.072, deliberation about real property. We will return. The council has now returned from closed session. We now go back into open session. There was no action taken in closed session. Counselors, any more?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a-
Councilman Parsons?
I'd like to make a motion that the mayor of the city of Granbury be authorized to sign a four-family residential contract or one to four families residential contract regarding the lot PT of Block 107 of the Barton addition of the city of Granbury, known as 717 and 723 Thorpe Springs. There we go. Using the dollars and monies discussed in session.
Mayor Wilk, I got a motion by Councilman Parsons, purchase of property. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilman, Councilperson Myers. Is there any more discussion on this property, council? Councilman Parsons, how do you vote? Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Perkel?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
That is approved. Counselors, is there any more discussion at this time?
Aye.
If not, the council meeting is adjourned.